Is the right way to go about it. And I appreciate the questions. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. I'm more than available to discuss at any other time. And thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that thinks they have some information that would be helpful for the board as we move forward?
Good evening. My name's Dave McKean. I own 26 acres on the Steel Road. One thing we encounter out on these pieces of land is theft. I've lost Christmas trees. I don't grow Christmas trees, but wild trees. I've lost firewood. I've lost mushrooms. I have -- people come in looking for mushrooms. We can't protect that stuff if we're not there. I've got a buddy that has lost animals and produce. So we would like to be able to protect our investments. I've cleared some land and it's expensive. I would like to grow some crops. I'd like to raise some animals. It's hard to do if you're not there. There are other sources of income. Sir, pensions rather than going to work. I'm looking at retiring here soon and I'd like to contribute to the food chain in Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Malarano. I have two ag zone properties up on the Trap Road. I really appreciate the opportunity that you opened this up to a public comment today. I know that wasn't part of what you had planned to do, but very much appreciate that. I have a few concerns. I think, I sort of want to bring this back a step. I think that the process by which this has all occurred has been somewhat confusing. I'm entirely baffled by why the ad hoc committee recommendations have just sort of gone to the wind. They were really quite ignored with the development of the Mayor's Action Group and they sort of started all over, as was the $40,000 study, independent study that was done. Just seems like all of that has just sort of gone by the wayside. Ideally, the Mayor's Action Group really never needed to exist. The recommendations were to form an agricultural committee or council or some sort of an advisory group that would really take this forward. I think that there were several flaws, that had several catastrophic flaws actually. As Kathy mentioned, there was never a vote to put forward what has been presented to you. It was never put to a vote within the Mayor's Action Group. It just sort of happened. I don't understand why that happened. I think that we deserve to know why. So lots of questions about the process itself. Proper protocol hasn't been followed and I really think we need to take a step back and ask why and then bring the ad hoc committee recommendations back into focus a bit more. I'm not saying one is better than the other. I couldn't tell you because I get very confused by all of it and it gets pretty overwhelming. But emergency response times, we've talked a little bit about that. There's lots of maps out there. I printed several today. The outline of Auburn is here and you can see that these emergency response times are broken down by four minute, eight minute, and 12 minutes. And much of our ag zone is not even within the 12-minute response time. That's just one. I have several others here. It's from a few years back, but it's good information. I doubt it's changed much. I think that, you know, several of the things that were read initially, that the ag zone is designed to limit sprawl and minimize the city's service costs. I think that we've lost sight of that. Someone else mentioned, you know, our hunting and recreation areas are going to be as impacted as our agricultural areas and our ability to really practice agriculture. There's agriculture and there's gardening and there's quite a difference. I think, I really would like to see folks kind of take a step back, take a breath on this and really slow this process down. I think that the ag committee, whatever it's being called, Ag Council Advisory Committee, needs to be developed. It needs to be developed not by not having been handpicked by one person. It needs to be a very, very methodical process and go forward with that.
I apologize for cutting you off. You've exceeded. And if there aren't many more members that come up, I may choose to invite people to come back up again.
Sure.
But I apologize. I'm just trying to keep everyone to the three, trying to be fair.
Yeah, no, totally, totally get that.
Thank you very much.
For experts that are being invited next week.
Can she have my time?
And then police and fire as well?
I guess police and fire wasn't on our radar, which is why when I saw so many collective minds here, I thought it would be a good idea to open it up. So thank you for bringing that up. I'll write that down in the notes. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
Good evening. My name's Chris Carson. I'm an Auburn ag zone landowner. I'm sort of the face of the problem here actually, to some extent. I bought my house in Auburn not knowing that I was in the ag zone back in 2000. And I think this is the sort of issue that you face here is one of unintended consequences. You know, you have people that initially do farm and then eventually you've got houses that they lived in that other people buy, not knowing or not being farmers. And you end up with people in the ag zone that are more residential. And so I think that's one of the issues that you're facing. You asked for questions and one of the critical questions, I think, is, and I think Michelle brought it up, there are municipal services that have to be delivered out to this area and there are clearly going to be trigger points and tipping points that are going to justify large expenditures for things like fire or police or additional road maintenance or plowing or school buses. And if I was in your seats, I'd want to, you know, bring the fire people in and the police people in and find out where are those things in North and South Auburn? You know, they must have good data to tell you, you know, once we get residences at a certain density, we get X number of calls to 911, we get X number of calls to emergency services, we need this many bus drivers and stuff. So I think those are critical questions to ask. And one other thing, Unity Maine has initiated a program, it's really interesting, called a Transfer of Development Rights Program. And it's specifically for this issue. And what it deals with is there are those folks here who need to farm and need a residence in order to farm and those people could build a residence. Other people would like to get money out of their land. You know, there are farmers who own a lot of land and they would love a way to, you know, provide retirement funds or get funds for their children. And this provides an avenue to do that by providing landowners with transferable development rights certificates, which they then sell to developers who then can increase the density that they develop at in other areas of the city. And the benefit to the city, and from your perspective, is that you get development where you want it and not in a scattershot way in the ag zone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Mike Pelletier, Pile Road. I'm very happy to see this gone this far. I've been in the process for eight years, as Eric knows, and this is the closest that I've seen that gives me some hope for what I've done already. I have put up a building already and it was in the ag zone. And I've been working on it for eight years and stuff like that and now I had to stop because of issues that happened. So, I mean, if we can get this to work, that would be great for me.
Are you currently farming at that property?
Yes, I am. I am. I've got cattle out there right now and I sell beef and stuff and I do. And I do have another residence in front and I built myself a log cabin out back for my retirement home. And as of right now, I am retired, but I'm not in it. You know, and, but I'm still trying to work with the city to straighten this out. So I don't know if this is going to work out with everything, but I have to find a way to get into it.
Okay. Thank you very much for speaking. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank all of you for attending. Oh, is there someone else that would like to speak? Yeah, absolutely. Come on up.
I was wondering if Michelle could use my time. She had some very key points and I wanted to hear them.
Well, I think, you know what? I'll cut you a deal. I'll give her a minute and a half. How's that?
Start talking from now?
I'll even wait till you hit the chair to put the camera on.
Starting now. So I think in the beginning you said something about what's the responsibility of this board. I think that's a great question. I think, again, if we're backing it up for a minute, taking a deep breath and slowing this process down a bit, I think we need to go back, or you, I guess, need to go back and look at, you know, if the proper process was employed through all of this. I think the recommendations that have been put in front of you aren't specifically from the ad hoc committee. They're more from the Mayor's Action Group. And although it's been termed, you know, a plan to modernize the ag RP zone, it also feels like a plan that has some potential to annihilate parts of it, which is pretty You know, do we step back and just look at one aspect of this? Is it just looking at, instead of acreage and everything else, just thinking about the income requirement? Do we say, instead of 50, we try 25? Do we see some farming growth from that, instead of taking it down to $1,000? Somebody could buy $1,000 of compost from me and sprinkle it on their lawn and now that qualifies them to build a residence on an ag zone property. I don't think that's what we want. One other thing that has really concerned me through this entire process is that I don't feel that folks in the ag zone have any idea what's going on with any of this. I think, I think if I had to put a really generous estimate on it, maybe 15 to 20% of folks in the ag zone really know this is happening. I would like to see some effort being placed by this group on how we put this information out to the folks. This is going to affect, you know, the same people coming to these things all the time and you're hearing from the same people all the time. We need additional folks to know what's going on. So, thank you again. I really appreciate you opening this up to the public today.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. On behalf of the board, I can say we appreciate you showing up today. We especially appreciate those of you that were willing to share your concerns and your willingness, quite frankly, to help us out. Several of us have been on the board and worked with zoning and have done so for several years, but that doesn't mean that we necessarily understand the nuances of agriculture. In fact, I would dare say that none of us, well, with the exception of one or two, really have much experience in it. So it's helpful for us to hear some concerns from people that are in that field and doing that every day. So, thank you very much. All right. The next item agenda, the next agenda item is actually a short report from staff.
Oh, are we concluding this with a workshop?
Oh, yes. I apologize.
The next steps? I think we just need to wrap up with refining our next steps and the schedule. We had some discussion about additional workshops. It was mentioned several times that we would try to bring in some folks. I know we, the planning board received an offer of information letter from three entities that could help answer questions. If we want to schedule them, we could have an additional work session on March 26th or the next official public meeting for the planning board is April 9th. So these are discussion items for next steps. What do you want to achieve and what timeframe and?
Okay. So to help provide clarification for staff, yeah, I apologize, just sort of let that drop off, right? So, well, since you're the members here, my initial thought was that we might actually move to a public hearing next month. However, allowing for comments at the end, I think, was useful. I think the workshop model is also useful because it doesn't require specific action on our part. And after tonight, I can tell you, I'm not sure I quite feel prepared to start diving into this specific language. I think I would like to hear some more information before we even sort of start to tackle the proposed ordinance itself. That's my personal feeling. I'm hearing Mr. Martelli, I'm seeing him nodding his head. Do we feel like maybe a workshop might be more appropriate?
Specifically entertaining that offer, I would say.
Yeah, I agree. And I think so, what the members of the public are unaware of is that we received a letter from three groups.
It was from Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, the Andersgagen Land Trust, and the Maine Farmland Trust.
And they reached out to us, letting us know that they would be willing to come in. And so I actually spoke to a representative earlier telling her that our intent is to have them back next month to help us sort of work through some of this. I would like to add to that list representatives from Mayor Labonte's ad hoc committee as well as if there's a city staff member that is quite confident in describing the ag study that was done.
The ad hoc? The ad, the?
Well, there was a consulting study done. And if there's someone who?
The meter in Goldenberg, meter in Goldenberg.
Yeah. I think that that would be helpful as well. We heard from someone this week from Mayor Levex's group. I will assume that someone from that group will be here next time and we may choose to ask for some input again, but I think we heard a little bit about that group. I think it might be helpful for us to hear from members of Mayor Labonte's ad hoc group at this point, too.
Isn't there an offer from Bates College Professor 2? I don't know that we entertain it, but?
I was not aware of that.
Was it? Isn't there something written?
There's a group working, a group of Bates students working with the Conservation Commission on some ag.
And what specific work are they doing?
I could get a summary of their study, but they're doing some analysis of the agricultural zone. I don't know the exact scope.
And that is a different, it's really having to do with food scarcity issues and?
It's separate from that study.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Okay. I think if we could sort of find out what they're doing, if it would add and be separate from?
A hand in the back?
Yes, sir.
I'm working with those students and they're looking at the ag zone and they're looking at it historically. They're trying to differentiate using GIS, the changes in land cover between 1986 and the present day. And they're also looking at how other communities have dealt with this continuing issue of urban sprawl in innovative ways. So they're looking at Wisconsin and Minnesota and Unity Maine and a couple of other places around the country that have come up with different zoning approaches.
I think it might be helpful for the board to note the land use change. Do you think that this group, because you're working with them, do you think that they would be ready to present a basic understanding of how?
I don't think they're ready to present yet, but they're close. They're probably two or three weeks away. I think?
We would be talking about next month, so?
Yeah, April, they will have a final presentation. It's actually going to be here in City Hall. They've already gotten a room, I believe, scheduled, so.
Do you know what date in April?
I can get you the date.
Okay.
I'll send you the date.
It might, I'm worried that now we're really filling up. It might be better for us to commit to going to their presentation as a group rather than adding them in addition to the meeting. I worry about sort of belaboring a meeting, especially if we have other actionable items or site plan reviews to do. Are there any of the groups that sort of come to mind?
But you passed that info off.
Yeah. I have the public here. Are there any specific groups that you think might be helpful to us that we might not be aware of?
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I've written down fire, police, and school, actually, because the issue of buses was mentioned. Yeah?
We wrapped in forestry expert.
I don't know. How, does one of those entities represent an expert in forestry?
We can ask if Department of Ag Conservation and Forestry can send somebody that's specifically familiar with forestry as part of that.
I assume that's what you were raising your hand about, sir? Is that, is that a pretty good group? Okay. Any other suggestions? Yes?
The Soil and Water Conservation Service, which I'm the supervisor of, sent a pretty extensive letter to the Maynard Group detailing their concerns.
With the, well, at that point, it's going to be a matter of public record. So I'm going to ask staff, is it possible to get a copy of that and forward that to us as part of our meeting materials?
Yeah, we can do that.
We can do that.
Right. Thank you very much. Any other groups that people think we should be aware of? All right. Thank you very much.
So are we looking at an additional meeting in March or are we shooting for the next meeting of the planning board in April?
Excellent question. How do people feel?
April.
April.
Okay. There you have it.
I have no life, so.
April.
April 9th. For a continuing, an information session?
Yes, a continued workshop, please. I think that might be best. Public hearing implies that we're going to take action and I think one thing we've learned tonight is that we're probably not going to be ready to take action, so.
Well, and I would ask if, we're going to, we're obviously going to summarize all of this and summarize some of the questions and issues that were raised, both by you and the community. If, as you, you know, toss and turn sometime this week, if you think of any questions that you really think need to be answered or as we look at the, trying to solve these two issues that have been raised, the lot size and the income rule, if you think of anything, any other, any approaches or any issues that might occur to you, please forward them to me. We can incorporate those into that list and we can make sure that the speakers that are going to be coming have that list as well so that they can be prepared in advance to help answer some of those.
Excellent. Do you feel you have enough direction from the board to move forward for next week, for next month's workshop?
I think we certainly do for a workshop.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, now on to the next item on the agenda. We have a short staff report specifically on, it's not, I guess, an update on a Court Street All Modes Mobility Alternative Analysis that's being funded by AVCOG and a Shoreland Zone update to conform with state timber harvest ordinances.
Yeah, so these are basically two briefings, two items that I just wanted to make you aware of. One is that we are issuing an RFP or have issued an RFP. This is something that city staff has worked with in conjunction with AVCOG, which is an all modes mobility alternatives analysis that would run from the river all the way up to the Gore intersection and goes to the leg from Court Street to Hampshire Street. So we will be looking at all modes of circulation as well as in physical design standards as well as in numbers. The idea is to increase the mobility for pedestrians, bicycles, transit, to make their a little more parity with the traffic flow. So we're also trying to make sure that this is modeled so that MDOT's funding it. We want to make sure that whatever design alternatives are conducted, that we actually look at the downstream flow impacts, traffic impacts, and we look at both base conditions for now in terms of changes as well as a 10-year timeframe in the future for potential build-out scenarios. So they look at, anytime they're going to be funding improvements, they want to make sure they're looking at base as well as projected future. The timeframe on this is the RFP has gone out. We should have consultants turning in their proposals by the end of the month. We'll be looking at consultant selection in April with hopefully kickoff by the end of April or May. So that means any observations or counts will be in the spring and summer months, which is great for pedestrian traffic as well as bicycle and any other modes. And we're looking at a fast track for conclusion potentially by fall. AVCOG is working on a, with us for a ad hoc steering committee that's going to have some contribution. And there'll probably be at least two community meetings around that. One would be around kind of their existing conditions and the other would be their alternatives analysis. So that's exciting stuff, so we're really happy to get that going. The second item is that we received a letter, which you do have, you received a copy in your packet from the Director of Forestry, for the Maine Director of Forestry. And what this essentially is, is the state is trying to have a clear understanding of which states, of which communities they need to be responsible for in terms of inspecting and monitoring and which the towns are going to take on themselves, particularly for timber harvesting. So I didn't, I lost my letter. I prefaced this wrong. This is essentially the state law for the shoreline zone around timber harvesting specifically. State law was changed in 2012 and we have by default been following it, but our code is not written to be consistent with state law currently. And the State Department of Forestry is looking to get that kind of cleaned up for cities to, or municipalities, towns to declare whether or not they are following the state and having the state implement and monitor this or whether the community is going to have more stringent language than the state has or whether there's going to be a hybrid, which we're currently supporting, which is we adopt that state language officially, but then they do all the work.
All right. Is there any impression which way we're going to?
Well, what I've heard is that there's current legislation that's before the current state congress that is looking to modify this language. So I'm bringing it to you. The city manager asked us to go ahead and start moving forward on some of this and that's why I've included the information in your packet. So the timing might be good. We were talking about looking into forestry and so this is timber harvesting specifically around the shoreline zone. And there are fairly stringent requirements around how you leave a forest after you're finished and how you plan and manage around that. And hearing from foresters, it is an onerous thing in terms of trying to make sure you meet all these standards. It has incredibly great outcomes if you do it. It's just, it is a lot of work. So those are the two primary updates I wanted to tune you in on primarily because we, staff was asked to go ahead and move forward on this ordinance change to the shoreline zone.
Thank you. The next, does anyone on the board have anything to report? Hey, all right. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Right, huh? Yeah. We'll give it to Mark.
Public comments.
Oh, actually, so we run our meetings a little bit different than the city council.
It's on here.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
When have we done that? Oh, my goodness. There you go. I don't think we've ever had anyone ask to do the public, by all means, please come up.
Thank you. Who are you again?
It's rare for us to have so many, so many people to talk to, actually, so.
This is my third time.
I appreciate it.
I talked about garages. I never thought I'd talk about garages. I wanted to elaborate a little bit on that shoreline zoning thing. I understood three or four years ago when I had some water issues that the town municipality didn't do anything with. didn't do anything with water, it was DEP. And that isn't really the case. Forestry has a lot to do with it. If you tie that in with agriculture, you can clear off 100 acres and click right across a brook. Farmers seem to have preference, preferential treatment. I don't think they could be arrested for that, but that is a problem. But I do think you ought to consider that, and whatever the reason was, four or five years ago, when you didn't want that, the council had an opportunity to accept that statewide standard then, they didn't. Now, if it's because of landowner rights, or we want to maintain our own control here in Auburn, fine, I've got no problem. But you do have a great support out there with Maine Forest Service on any water pollution, and just because it says shoreline, it doesn't mean the ocean. It's little brooks that dry up in the summer, intermittent streams, there's a lot of power out there that can help. Brooks and rivers, we've got Andersgoggin, Little Andersgoggin, all the little feet of brooks, there's a lot of shoreline out there, wetlands in significant areas, that, too. So, anyway, I hope I clarified some of my discussion.
Yes, it's nice to finally meet you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker.
My name's Leroy Walker, I live in New Auburn, and I just want to get on the bandwagon with what she said about the walkability and the bicycle. I'm very upset. We learned about this about a month ago, that they were working with this group that's housed on Minutet Avenue, or off of Minutet Avenue, and they're going to give this kind of money to do a study from Court Street to the bypass, the bypass to Hampshire Street, when we have been complaining, and the biggest walking person that we have in New Auburn walks and complains every day of the week about something in this city, and yet New Auburn, from Main Street to all of the hills in New Auburn, are left out of this study. And as far as I'm concerned, Council of what, five, it is bullshit, period. And they have not come back to me, I asked the manager, what are we going to do about this, and we've heard nothing back. Martelli walks every day of the week as well, from New Auburn, not Hampshire Street, not Court Street, and most people won't walk Court Street because they're scared to death of it. We want bikes, we want walking people, we want better sidewalks, and we're doing a whole New Auburn redevelopment, and yet we're not part of what they call a bike and walkability study. Again, you know where I'm coming from and how I feel about it, we should have never been left out of this thing, and if anything, the city should have said, we'll put in some money so that New Auburn becomes part of this study. They can spend money to build a sidewalk on Minutet Avenue, 800 feet of sidewalk, or whatever the distance is, for $800,000, and they can include New Auburn in a walkability bike study. Again, you know where I'm coming from, it's just bull.
Well, I guess my question would be, is there a plan to do a similar thing in New Auburn?
We're spending millions of dollars to upgrade bike and pedestrian, as well as vehicular facilities in New Auburn, between the city-funded project and the state-funded projects. This particular project came out of a vote that the council took, I don't remember the exact date now, to reduce Court Street to one lane. And after they made it very clear that improving bike, pedestrian, and parking facilities along Court Street, we put in for the next round of Unified Planning Work Program, UPWP funding through the state and federal government. It's taken almost three years to get through the funding cycle that was in place originally, and into this next funding cycle, and we're finally able to do that project, but this was really intended to hit on that council goal of improving Court Street. So, hopefully that helps with the context, but it's taken a long time, based on that early council vote in 2014 or 15, whatever it was, to get to this point where the federal funding is available.
So that funding will be directed towards New Auburn?
No, that's for the Court Street study. We'll be starting the next round of putting in projects for that funding, I believe, this summer, for the 2020-2021 funding.
Is there a plan to look at some of the New Auburn master plan pieces and conduct some studies around that, with the possible funding coming from the upcoming round?
We've spent a lot of money to do that in New Auburn, to design what's about to be built there. So I don't think it's been, that New Auburn is left out in this respect, I think it's a separate project. We'd be paying somebody to review exactly that type of work, if we paid somebody to review the plans at the stage they're at right now, in New Auburn, to do it again, essentially.
Well, thank you for providing some context on the current project, and why it's being funded where it is. Is there any other public comment? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.